I'd like to call our meeting to all join me with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Now, for if anybody at home's watching tonight, we're screaming hopefully live and we wanna, we want reports on how it's working sound wise and picture wise. And you can call Tom Loeffler. I want to have Pastor Mac Martin from the First Baptist Church open us with prayer.
What is great, Father, we want to come to you this evening to first say that we love you and we thank you for this beautiful gift of the city of the chief of events. Thank you for the council members here that are dedicating their time. For the law enforcement and the firefighters and all the responders here in the city. Thank you for the sacrifice that they are giving here as well. But we just invite you to this time tonight, where we just break the blessing off this discussion and everything that's going to be happening here this evening. Welcome this side of this room and just ask for your wisdom to discernment on this. We thank you once again for this city and the blessing that we have and we just pray that this hand is full. But we love you and we thank you and amen, my friend.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Pat.
Well, Mayor, I got my first complaint. It's not working.
Well, we'll just have to keep going. Okay, let's go down in fewer minutes from the first meeting, the eighth session.
We're making motion approved minutes of the May first twenty twenty three city council. Twenty twenty three city council.
Got a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries one. Let's move down to our appropriation ordinance.
Move for approval of ordinance number and twenty three.
Second. Got motion and a second. Opposed? Carry. Okay, with we'll go to our visitor section and we have representatives from the municipal utilities here to present one of our power plant operators with an award of excellence.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is John Littleton. I'm with Municipal Utilities. I am here tonight to award Mark with the Power Plant Operator Award of Excellence. The Power Plant Operator Award of Excellence is presented to the power plant operator or maintenance technician who best exemplifies the core values of their community and their criteria. Demonstrated commitment, improving the lives of community members striving to achieve excellence, protect the field, act as a mentor for peers and others. Mark truly embodies, and this is not my words, had a great number of people present some information through this, though this is their words. Mark truly embodies what it takes to be an outstanding operator team member in the city of Augusta's electric power production division and the city of Augusta. He is exceptionally innovative, adaptable, and deeply owned, consistently or constantly on the lookout for ways to improve the way that we do our job by designing additions to our current toolkits. For example, he designed fabricated rolling customizable steel work tables that are frequently versatile and useful when fabricating new tools and parts, well as for general purpose projects. These tables can even be passed together to large platforms. He's taken the lead in the APPA, Public Power. Some of which include designing and making yard signs, placing them well, fabricating signs for service trucks, conducting contests for third, fourth, and fifth grade students in Augusta's two elementary. He has time to work, but that's. Even organized a food drive that benefited the community. He is committed to the use improvement of the organization, the power plant and himself. Mark's contributions are always among the very best of the organization. And you extend our gratitude and congratulations to Mark on the well done and award him the Power Plant Operator Award. Thank you.
Okay, is Heather here tonight? Heather Brungard, is she here?
Emails of the audience, I'd say no.
Want to make sure.
Would you like to get a presentation?
Yes.
So Heather, an event request, this request had to do with the carry on right stage in Garvin Park pursuant to the policy. They also adopted many, many years ago, whatever they for profit entity case, I believe, state is requesting to utilize the statement it requires government body approval. I believe that the rest of the detail on the is in your package. It's a part of the body for consideration.
Counsel.
I'll make a motion approved Davis Dance Recital at the grand stage on May seventeenth twenty three. At six from six thirty to eight o'clock P M.
Second motion. Got a motion and a second to this request. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Should carry. Thank you. Let's move down to our business, first business side. Broadband internet presentation that draft.
Yes, Mayor Council, I'm going to go ahead and invite up our representative. Have a presentation prepared for you, but just as a matter of background, you go back to the start of the COVID pandemic. One of the things that really became obvious was the need for for broadband, faster internet. People were stuck at home, there was online virtual schooling, more people working from home. And the subpar abilities of a lot of our network speeds, especially in rural communities, became really obvious. We've seen in the last four or five years. The speed with companies staying and building new networks in rural communities. A number of different companies, one of them has a previous period before the council. So Ideatech is the latest one that has proceeded down the path. We provide decent agreements and things to look at, but I wanted them to be able to come in for the council and explain their project, explain the technology. And one, just help everybody out, but also give you a chance to learn about their specific project. At the end of this, provide some guidance, some discussion direction forward with some of these, considering some of these various proposals. So with that, I'll turn it over to our guests, let them introduce themselves. I will pull up the presentation that they were putting up using.
Thank you very much, Josh. My name is James Cristal. Ideatech. This is Thomas Garrett. I'm the director of business development. Well, just as Josh said, we're excited to be here today and kind of explain what Ideatech is to the community. We've been working a lot throughout the state. We're a local provider, provider out of Kansas. What our mission to do is to bring internet freedom, just that power one presentation in front of you. We were founded back in nineteen ninety nine by our president, he was in high school. He started Ideatech, started his computer repair shop, working on computers back then. And eventually he saw the green light of in that five, going to be the gold standard. During that time, after graduating high school, going to school there. He was able to put fiber optic into the Gwanda Bueller, hometown is, and did such a good job that Bueller has the fiber. He's an executive during that time gave him a computer to work on. Then worked on his computer, did a really good job and said, I think you now hours. Would you be interested in building out some of our Verizon tech? Long story short, gave Daniel a bid to build out one of those towers. I did such a good job and Ideatech actually built out all of Verizon four G towers, which he was, I know now we're into five Gs, but that was a big thing for Ideatech. Ideatech was able to build out throughout the state about twenty twenty fifty. Sold that portion of business off to a company called Theo Group, who purchased all that at large price. Daniel had a couple routes to go. He could, you know, take it, leave, just go do something else. And what he decided to do was take what he had and invest in what we call two point oh. To where today we do fiber to home, fiber to business. We also have wireless solution as well, and sometimes fiber doesn't make sense, maybe does do a business case. But again, our mission is to serve the unders, throughout the state. And so we're working on a lot of projects throughout the state. And we're excited to be a part of Augusta. We've been looking at Augusta for a while now and looking at really trying to expand. So if you look at our next page of when you look at all the territories that we're at, you can kind of see we're working on a lot of different projects currently throughout the state. And one that stands out pretty close to you, everybody here is to wonder. And so we're working at trying to expand a little bit more south. Yeah, I'm going to let Thomas Garrett kind of speak a little bit about this project absolutely, Augusta that we have right here.
Yeah, I'll add a little bit to what James said. Through the process of selling a portion of the business after expanding, what we were left with, you know, the company just the middle mile network that we built. Essentially, when you think of broadband, there's a couple of different things. Fiber that connects towns, that connects websites, that's called middle mile, that has last mile infrastructure. You get to a town, you build out from a pop site, you serve the homes and businesses, then a town. And so that portion, that piece of the network and that business that we sold was a middle mile network. It was, you know, fiber that serves cell towers throughout the state. And after the sale, we were left with a couple of markets where we had lost, which was Bueller, Haven, and I think Mall of Small Fiber Markets. And they basically took the capital from sale and say, we're going to reform the business and focus on fiber to the home and fiber to the business. It's where we think, you know, the need is. You know, the vision is internet freedom. So the capital started reinvesting heavily over the last year. We've done a lot of expansions and a lot of fiber to the home projects. And now we operate, you know, in a lot, you can see in Kansas. So it's really what we do. We've built a lot. We're building past, you know, two thousand and hundred every month at the moment with a lot of new infrastructure in towns like yours. And where we see the opportunity for us is communities that have a cable system that are sitting today, you have communications and an A T and T. So A T and T has a copper system around for a long time. And then probably in the eighties, COAX, big water town cable system that's operated by copper. And really fiber is the next generation. That's like the thing that's going to set up the city for the next fifty plus years of connectivity where everybody has the availability for bandwidth, super scalable. The same piece of fiber. If you go to slide, it says Wi-Fi fiber. And so why fiber? Fiber is the most scalable technology, what we do. A piece of infrastructure that we will build throughout the state that comes to the home is the same infrastructure. Same fiber optic line that carries that across the state cellphone tower. And so if you imagine, you know, I want to deliver enough to go up the tower, broadcast throughout the state. You know, thousands of cell phones. It's the same fiber optic cable that will go on directly to the home. And so you can imagine data capability. You go back to the pop site and upgrade the electronics in the pop site and the infrastructure that we build today is constantly scalable, like electronics that you can put at the head end. So that's, that's why we think, I mean, we, Daniel was forward thinking about the thing, Wi-Fi is going to be the next big thing. And we started doing it ten, fifteen years ago. Nobody was doing it. And we've been fortunate to be able to capitalize on, you know, his knowledge and the team that he built.
When looking at, if you look at COAX type cable, you understand what it is. Created cable and what they realize also is they can put. I came in the community not too long ago, certainly, and I talked to a lot of local business owners and residents within the community. And I asked them what kind of troubles they may be having. Were they having good options with the current internet providers? Were they looking at something different with fiber interests? And all those businesses that went to, majority of them said, yes, we would definitely look at having fiber option. A lot of times what happens is everybody's on a Vex cable system. Every kid comes home from school, they hop online, everybody's starting streaming nowadays. You notice that it bogs down. A nice thing with fiber infrastructure is you get your own internet platform, but you don't have to worry about that bogging down system. And so that's one of the other benefits of fiber, the thing that you can push through. I don't know about you, but we hate the little ring that goes around your TVs. We don't actually do TV service, but we tell people, okay, you can tap the cord, you can save money by going to a reliable internet provider. You can actually stream a lot of different things like Netflix, Hulu, YouTube, TV. So at the end of the day, it stays with the customer. It's the work we have to live within, a lot of money. And it helps also keep them involved with applying for jobs, maybe they've been working from home, different doctor appointments from home. They don't have to worry about the Zoom connection going out and losing signal. When you have a good internet connection, it really makes a big difference. We realize today that internet is no, you're a luxury, it's a necessity. So that's one of the biggest things that fiber can bring. It's going to bring the future and it's going to bring it to Augusta, you're the route.
So something that James touched on really quick, but I want to make sure you guys heard, you know, we don't offer a television streaming service and we don't offer cable television. So we're, we're an internet, we do have, we, we offer a home line phone service, which is a, it's a phone that works on internet service. It doesn't work through a traditional copper telephone line. But TV is not a part of our business and what typically, you know, trying to in a community is help folks in the community that do use cable to adopt streaming services. Because it helps to, you know, you get, so you go to your cable provider and they're offering COAX internet and cable TV as a package. We realized that it was a struggle for us to win the customer, because sometimes they didn't want to leave the cable behind, right? They wanted the cable TV. They're like, man, if I'm going to keep cable TV, I'm just, well, keeping it with the same provider. And so what we do is we'll come and educate. We'll do community events where we can, you know, take a public place and invite people in and teach them how to use streaming services that you use over our, that infrastructure. So it's like, hey, we bring you the product, the tool, and then teach you how to leverage that product to save money or get rid of cable, start using streaming services. Just because it helps to enable adoption of our product, but it's not some charge for or make money off of. We're just for anyone who wants to be able to use.
And that's one thing, every community that go into, Thomas mentioned, we have national meetings. So we invite customers, residents, business owners from the community to come listen to this talk. We'll explain, you know, the pricing, we'll explain how the process looks like, what is fiber, how is it going to get carried? We talk about community support ideas. Another big thing that we do is we realize that a lot of communities still don't have Wi-Fi, especially in some areas, there's still children and parents that are driving out to libraries to get connectivity. Other vendors that try to come on streets who have a POS system and they're trying to charge things like that and they can't do it, and they're losing actual business costs. And so what we do in communities is we work with the community, work with the neighbors, the cities, what can we do to help people? What would be something that Augusta would want to make this city better? And a lot of times that we've done is we supply things to the public homes, people can stay connected. Wi-Fi zones and certain business districts, parks, things like that, that allows to have security cameras outside. And so it's really a big thing that we can do in the community, but love to be a community partner. As Thomas said, we don't have to, we don't charge for it. And when we come into a community, we're pretty much nested in that community. We're very involved. We like to be part of it. We like to put our name behind a lot of things and so. Fully expect Ideatech will be a phenomenal community partner and be coming to a lot of meetings to help out with things like that and just help with that, get second miles.
So I'll talk a little bit about, you know, what to do in Augusta. And I mean, the simple way to say it, like to serve every home and business in the city with a fiber optic connection. It's about six million dollars of private, it's not anything to do, ready to spend the money, the funds that are required to start expanding as possible. It's probably about a year really to get the job done and get it all done. You know, we, potentially it could happen faster, but you know, Thomas. About a year to get everything done. And that would obviously involve putting new lines in all across towns. You know, it's, it's, it can be a little bit invasive. We understand that. James said, we try and be a really good partner in the community by coming, setting up a pre-destruction, talking to what works and you're, you know, you guys have a municipal facility that you operate. And just get to know everybody. And through that project, I came from project management, I was a project manager before I did business development. The biggest thing for me was, you know, you're not a community, so if you're not communicating, things don't give me great. So and then what does that look like afterwards, you know, slide of the packages? These are pretty high with what you see from a provider of us anywhere, you know, big event capability at ninety bucks a month. And then we have a basic package, which is a hundred, hundred megabits symmetrical. It's the lowest speed tier that we offer and it's fifty miles a month, pretty reasonable. And that we also participate in a program called A C P, which allows low income homes to adopt service through the Affordable Connected Program. Was something that was released by the federal government as a subsidy, adopt internet services. And that basic package, that hundred megabits service is free to anybody that qualifies for A C P. And then we go to the federal government for reimbursement for that service.
And so a lot of times is what people don't know, A C P is, is not very well advertised. So a lot of children accuse that we're especially like liberal western Kansas. We tell them, hey, if your child qualifies for free produced lunches, you automatically qualify for this program. And so what we like to do is partner with school districts and say, hey, you're an open home. If we can come and do a hire, a packet, we can help do a train to train. If we can't actually sign one person up, they have to fill out their own personal information. But the federal government in Kansas really made it a lot more simple. You put in your driver's license number. If you don't have that, maybe you have a social security, you can put that in and you can literally tell you yes or no right there. Any provider can participate in it. We're the only provider that actually puts it down to super. Typically what it is to get a thirty dollar credit. So when another provider come in and our package is fifty bucks, you have the A C P credit, well, you have to pay twenty dollars. Difference with us is we understand, we say, step down to your followers. And the biggest thing is we come in a community that might be our target. One of the biggest things they see is competition is good. It drops the prices and the van speed goes up. So a lot of times that people who maybe don't want to do it to have, they can now say, hey, well, I have another option, that if I'm not happy with it, I can call. And you will see that prices will go down. So it's a good thing to have competition. A C P is another that we do in the community, just getting involved and making that information out there. That's one.
So, you know, the, and it says, the right partner, why us and why not someone else? You know, one thing I'll say is where I go, there are a lot of people that live in Kansas and around, around the Wichita area. We know what's going on from here. We also do, you know, everything we can to be a partner. And we, we want to figure out ways to help make the city. And I work with multiple communities on, James mentions, public Wi-Fi opportunities, also worked with communities to leverage a perspective that they might have to bring in. I know, you know, that Josh mentioned that you guys are installing optical ground wire on one of your new electrical lines. Put it, that can be, you know, leveraged to bring in technologies. Well, how we can help you, if that's an option, we can find an access point where that optical ground wire can be accessed and connect you guys back to, you know, a facility. Like your water towers or your sewage facility or anything like that. And we want to figure out how to do that. We want to figure it out, get ready to build the seed there. And so that's really why the right partner, we're doing that in a lot of communities and we can be a good partner. And then, you know, just to fast forward to what's up, you know, there's a couple of things we have in you guys today. We have franchise agreement, which becomes a matter of course for a communications provider to operate in the utility right away in town. And then we have a pole attachment agreement. And so we attach electrical infrastructures in the municipality. We attach to electric cooperative infrastructures all the time to deliver our communications infrastructure. We're, we're really well versed in connecting the facility and attaching in a way that doesn't aggregate the value of it for you. And we can coordinate with the other communications providers in town. Wouldn't be a burden to you. We do it all the time. But that would be other us. We have a pole attachment agreement. It's a very good consideration to. Yeah, that's really it. What's up, ask it. Hey, we'd like to get started as soon as we can. Agreements that consider, I'm going to prove today and you get going.
Any questions that you have? I know we rambled a lot. So anything that you have?
Could you explain the actual technology? Individuals home?
You want to do it? Go ahead.
So, so we were to set up a pop site. And what we, our model is we typically co-locate in an A T and T facility, which you guys have a co-location facility in town. So we would place electronics in that facility. And then we build a fiber optic line that has glass fiber, carries data from that facility to the home. And at the heart of it, there is a log in or a unit, you know, whatever you want to call it, takes that data, recognizes it from the pop and delivers you internet at home. But the important thing to, to take from it is from, from your modem at home to the pop site out from the pop site elsewhere. It's a glass fiber optic line hallway. There is an net that connects to all the trucks or anything that in between. One of the things I try and. Try and communicate to help people understand why that's a good thing. A COAX system is electric, it's electric. As you put more demand on, it creates more bridge, if you will, which, you know, makes this something. And so as it ages or as the demand decreases, it starts to struggle with that. Heat creates failure points. Fiber optic doesn't stop from that. It's, it's not a viable way to go. Heat will conduct it through it. It's just, it's an optical G system. So it's just sending light down to, to your home. And so we can have a lot of the speed up. There isn't any resistance and no problem. It helps you to deliver fast data out and issues that you can get and COVID. And COVID, you know, Josh, that's really for a company like us, it was the catalyst for us. Because what happened was everybody went home and started, you know, operating for the moment, using the internet. And the spring system that it forced down today, the character, current to a hundred, now than it ever looked in the past. And it's starting to heal. And so we have people reaching out to us all the time, saying, please come and, you know, upgrade the infrastructure we need here. Like a month from a problem, more now than it ever was. And the reason is that the system that existed before, that was doing a good enough job. Come keep up with the, this is today, the system. And so we're bringing something that can keep up and exceed what the demand is. And say, you guys are fifty years, please.
Commissioner, I want to also have to answer your question. What is it applied for customers to be following? What we do to build those little cap, that's fantastic, little flush with ground. We do not go into the customer's. So what happens is if a resident serves, they call us in contract, they have caps on that stuff. And they can say, do you want this package? We'll then stop this, go out to that part, that easement where that is, run a fire line through their apartment. What happens is they bring that fiber in into your, that fiber modem. And from there they can activate wifi and you can do all your tasks. But that actual line will actually be plowed. Plowed six inches below the ground to make sure that we get that three, six inches. Uh that's specific sprinklers, you know, they said we didn't, that we just take care of that, not only the resident to take care of. We will not actually build it if everybody's individual, every home has access to it. But to put up a pop network service, those are the ones that are actually applying, applying problems to their actual.
Yeah, there's a lot of, I mean, there's some providers like that. And they build an infrastructure, they build what, what James is describing, they call the drop fiber. It's from the point group. And they'll come through and build all that infrastructure out, they go, they found the Funkstone all on you in the yard, putting it along to the home, that's the first. So we just build the infrastructure that makes it capable. When somebody signs up for service, we get back and install that drop to the home. We don't do the drops at the time of installation, so.
All of that help. So, so once it gets, uh, this, you run the drop to the house and it goes into, everything inside the house is wireless?
Yeah, so there's a, that's, that's a good question also. So we are, I mean, there's in-home, like you can wifi, you can also hardwire your home. You can run like ethernet cable to every device if you want to, but most people don't do that. What most people do is they have a modem that comes into the house and then casts a wifi signal. And that wifi signal connects to, you know, wifi-enabled devices, wireless devices that can communicate with that modem. And so a lot of the times, the problem can be that wireless infrastructure or that home network that you're experiencing where wifi doesn't work very good. So what, what we have, to answer the question, both things. You, you get the fiber line to the home, it reaches the modem, that's how you get internet connection. And then from your modem, you talk about in-home, it reaches all your devices. And you can hardwire it or you can do it wireless. It's, it's, to you, that modem that we have has ports on the back for hard lines. And it also emits wifi. One thing we do have is product, it's a premium wifi product. And in, in the home, um it broadcasts and it's actually trained to recognize the devices when you're home. It's got a software called Bloom on it. And so it will, so you have like a Samsung TV, certain model TV in your back bedroom or something. It will recognize the model of TV that's trying to connect to it and the proximity from, from the unit. And it will tune itself in to that specific device. But it's spent a lot of time developing that infrastructure to give the, the, in the home, the best uh user experience possible on that wifi infrastructure. So that's something that we've upgraded and made an investment in. And why have we done it? Because a lot of truck rolls, we roll to our house for the community, is because the wifi isn't working very good. So we've got this new product, it's like really, really good, so that we don't have to spend money rolling trucks at the time, we can manage that thing remotely, so.
And the nice thing too is we don't have like a fiber to charge. So like you could use your own, what we call modem, you can also have a power. So say you have your own router at your house, you just need a, you can use your own router that you have. You don't have to worry about paying any extra. The nice thing about that premium wifi is we realize a couple of homes, they have basements and they have good connectivity in some rooms. They don't have good connectivity in other rooms. So there's mesh units that help spread the wifi out. So the premium wifi is in addition to the autonomous that helps spread that wifi connection out. I would thank most of these people hardwired TVs because they don't want to risk it. Uh and you know, gig connection, two gig connection, uh yeah, you won't ever have to experience having too many people at your house and say, why is it wireless? Because you have a good connection to it. So it's a totally optional thing, but when we come in, because forty-nine ninety-five is what they have, that's with that. So if they want to add on a premium wifi, no, they can absolutely do that. The only thing that we try to fax unfortunately is the phone because it has eight-nine-one-one, it has your federal, state, local taxes. That's about it. So just wanted to make that clear if you had any questions.
But specifically to your question, to your point, you can do either one. Once you get into the home, you can deliver a wifi. You guys, I mean, the homeowner can decide if they want a wifi network or if they want a hardwired network. And what we'll hand off to is, is a modem that you guys can plug your own system into or we can provide you.
And you, and you'll wire it to the customer for location as far as inside the house?
Yeah, the, and the install techs are really good at that. And that what they'll do is they'll come out and they'll look at the home and they'll figure out, okay, where do you want it to be? Exactly in your home. And then they'll figure out the best path to get that drop to the home. And then they'll bring that drop in at the right point where they can efficiently get it to where you want it in the home. Yeah.
And they've got this cool thing. It's almost like a cell phone that they can walk around and they can look at the connection of each room as well. So we have people all the time, they'll say, hey, connect them. Can you open up my TV? Can you help me get that wifi on that? Or hey, I have this ethernet, this blue cable that runs in my computer in the basement. And I plug that into my modem, what I'm saying, we can plug that in. So we, we do that at the time of the install. Or installs leave and make sure the customer is happy and signed on. We won't leave if it's not happy. So our customer service is our number one priority. Uh yeah, making sure that we, we have an issue, we're out the same day. As Thomas mentioned, you know, we should call through or to our, do that one last second, you guys, and we'll very, well, talk to customers.
I think you answered this question, but the source of fiber going to be the AT&T, that's what we have to wait for you to run a line to one. Already, that part of it's already here?
Yeah, right. Timeline to connect to customers, I mean, construction's a difficult thing, right? Like it's hard once you kick off construction, you have to make a commitment on when the first customer will like. But typically we say sixty to ninety days for, for first customer to like.
So is that option available to all vendors? Agreement you guys have with AT&T.
So, yeah, we use that facility um because we're a CELEC. So we're a comparable exchange provider and AT&T is quite allowing for it to use to CELEC entities. So a lot of CELEX, you know, Cox is a CELEC. Trying to think of other providers that you might know of, there would be a CELEC, but a lot of providers uh all under that designation and so they can put that infrastructure in. It is the uh broadband provider, but not qualified as that exchange carrier. Um and so they wouldn't have access to use that facility. They'd have to stand off site. It's not unique to us, but that we do.
So we're excited, you know, we're, we're ready. Hey, we look at Augusta, we hear nothing but great things, see nothing but great things. Uh the community's really growing, downtown especially is really coming re-amped and getting relived there. Um just from taking surveys of the residents within the community, having fiber option would be huge for them to be able to continue to work from home. As technology continues to advance, the data used to be five megabytes used to be really good. But now you're looking at everybody, the minimum connectivity the state wants is a hundred megabit per second. So we make sure that we're a lot better than that.
You know, that's, it's an interesting point when, you know, we think about what we deliver for a connectivity perspective. So the top package that we offer today is a two-point-five gig solution. So it's two thousand five hundred megabits per second. And, you know, you, you might be at home today with a, you know, a two, two hundred meg, two hundred megabit per second connection from Cox or something like that. And people often say, well, you'll never need that. And it's funny, if you look back in time, now, what we survived on from a connectivity perspective, it hasn't taken that long, but now we need a two hundred megabit, you know, connection. And it won't be that long until we need a two and a half or a ten thousand megabit per second connection. So what we're doing today, the physical infrastructure will carry the need. Um it's scalable to, you know, into the future, so I just.
Your numbers, is that the maximum? Like you mentioned in your presentation about when all the kids get home from school and start gaming and stuff? It draws down on the system? Is your system going to draw down the same pace?
We've never had a customer impact in lag on the network yet. We got really close and it was the the AFC championship game was the most time that we tested the core to, I don't know, capacity, seventy-five percent or something. And it was like, I mean, the engineers, hey, we're just five percent capacity on there. And it was streaming. It was TV. And so, no, we don't encounter it. And, you know, yes, we've realized, okay, this is the first time we were actually slightly concerned with the core capacity. And, and we're going to keep, continue to do upgrades to make sure that it's capable, so.
One of the, the main reason, people, you look at Ideatech reviews and things like that, is we specifically will not try to overdo our network by fifty percent. Because you see a lot of networks, they'll just, they have oversubscribers. And that's where we see that, that bogging down. We see that it hits that percentage, we build more infrastructure, we put more, as Thomas said, technology at the cabinet. That way the customer impact is not experiencing that. Because I can tell you one thing, customers will not call us if they're giving more speed than what they're paying for. But if they aren't getting their speed, they will call us. And that's the one of the things that we don't really have, is people saying, well, you guys are slow on this fiber issue, what's going on? Unless there's some scheduled maintenance, which they will be notified about, or unless something happens and something is, somebody did call eight-one-one did, and they did something there. Uh you should be, not on wood going out of connection because it's, a lot of it's underground, weather doesn't affect it. So cold, heat, things like that, you don't have to worry about it. So that's one big thing that what's, makes us stand out from competitors is we don't oversubscribe our different. If you guys call, you can get closer to the mic. There's, there's some people, some people have a hard time.
Affliction too from being from, sorry, I have an affliction to being from someone else, so.
Question with staff, is this agreement is not, it, it is include or it's not an exclusive contract with Ideatech so other vendors could come in if they wanted to?
Yes, uh and that's actually required by state statute that it would not exclusively, so other vendors can come in.
Were we going to consider tonight actually approving this and the agreement?
You can, but it's, it's up to you. So it depends on your comfort level. I wanted to give you a chance to meet and interact with them, to answer questions, learn about the network. So it's really up to your comfort level. So I'll review the documents because we've been reviewing with different companies for a while. And uh staff has reviewed the documents, the city attorney has reviewed the documents. Um there was a bit of, I would say from my perspective, trying to sort all of the ones out, there was a bit of a comfort for this one. Uh we actually have a um say, oh, that was done like back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, I believe, the boilerplate for most of these documents. So it's very clear to something that we had already adopted.
Or try to adopt tonight. I've got several questions, you know, particularly the uh payment to the city. For different items in here, but if we're going to, all right, we can discuss those later.
Well, it, it might be a good time. I mean, if you have comfortable, you're, you're, you're asking a question. So what, what I would, what if I start with, and then let the conversation go where it goes. The uh, if you can explain, yeah, this is one of the things I had to dig into that statute and understand. But I claim to be an expert, but the franchise fee itself on the grocery seat is something that only applies to a very specific part of your business. If not to the end of that stuff that is going to be going on, really, that's kind of where the pole attachment is located. Can you walk us through some of those differences? What's franchise, pole attachment, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, so um I'll do my best. I'm an expert, but.
Well, I'm sorry, this way?
Yeah.
Uh in your agreements, take the compensation to the city.
Mm-hmm.
Some, you just, the items that are specified there on how the pay, it says Ideatech agrees to pay the city one, per year, per attachment. They tend, now, are those attachments?
So this was, we ended up with the agreement is, one we have. This was a vision that we had in there. So I was comparing between, I asked the idea, but why do they have this delivered? Understand it, you guys are not actually installing a different sort of project, but it's wherever to come, we have some kind of presence, which that's something that I had kind of asked for, you know, why? So it made it in there, but they explained to me that it falls under that provision in Augusta, so. Maybe you can explain the difference?
Yeah, so it talks about CELEC, which is distributed antenna system and what is, I don't know, you can be familiar, but the term is cell or a cellular installation. Those are wireless infrastructure which helps secure a system to provide service. And so we're playing with it because in the Brighton, in the uh Exeter or we installed a lot of distributed antenna system that were used on Verizon. So we would, so we would, Verizon used to mesh this. That's not in the air and it's not something that, that we're planning. It's, it's a, it's a thing that exists in a lot of these agreements that um, cause some compensation or something that, that plays with distributed antenna systems. That specifically is a little bit of a, if you will, we intend this project. But franchise agreement was the right, so it was something that we were going to do. It lays out compensation to the city, let's.
Be a, a D H S franchise fee. Item P, make sure you permit the, that percent of grocery receipts. As identified in KSA, C six, I read statute, but it obviously say you're not going to submit five percent on all grocery receipts.
Yeah, it's fifty percent as it's defined in statute. KSA, well, I mean, I don't know.
So, so what do you, Lou, that you don't?
Franchise fees under the statute are charged on phone, anything that's phone-related, so all any phone services uh in the city that would, um, under statute be required to pay a five percent fee on. And not on broadband services, go on broadband internet, there isn't a franchise fee on telephone and phone services and anything that is. There isn't a franchise fee on telephone and phone services and anything that is. Yeah, not an expert, but I'll do the best I can. It's anything that's traditional phone system that's subject to nine one one or anything like that. That would, that revenue would be subject to a franchise fee.
Only on phone, true.
Yes, only on phone service. And then the thing, if you look at, you know, there's other statutes that requires a program to pay based on video services, so that would be cable. Again, we don't do any cable with this. So that, that, that is not actually in our franchise fee.
AFC, it says a one-time permanent DAS facility. How's it different than it was for DAS?
So again, not like, not relevant to what the, uh, but I think it's a permit fee essentially to account for the installation of the facility. And then the other one was ongoing payment of the existence of that right. So one would be a, a thousand dollars for a month ago, store a small cell or a, or DAS facility. And then a hundred and fifty dollars for an annual, you know, existence of that facility.
And then there's rental charges in addition to any other costs and expenses or charges incurred. Uh, you should pay ten dollars, annual fee by the thirty first for each whole attachment. Um, who, who keeps track?
Well, it's something we'll, we'll both have. So the whole attachment fee is something that I, I will say it's harder for me to analyze. Uh, we did find one other city that we from, uh, also found a, a study that I had um, because I, I don't know what the right number is to comparison. And at least the, the cities that we found, this is ten dollars, fifty six cents. We found another city that was charging that higher amount. Um, I've been speaking with Ideatech and what the national study said that I use private utilities. When a poll is on a generally charged less than municipalities, definitely in single digits below the ten mark. And then municipalities have a lot wider span kind of as unregulated. We're not under the cases in the way this is.
Is that per poll?
Per. So I don't have multiple attachments on a.
Yeah, it would be a single attachment per pole. And so it's essentially every pole in town would attach to, would pay ten dollars per pole per year. No, and, and, you know, what we, we want to attach to as many as possible. We'll attach the ones that we can attach to and meet. So when we attach our facility to a facility or any facility, there's a code that outlines what we can do and how we can be compliant. That relates to clean and services from, um, electrical infrastructure that's carried on pole workers. And so basically we'll go out and review, um, get back from your municipal electric, um, operators and talk about where we can and can't attach. And I'll goal us to attach to as many places as possible, so that we have poles that you operate in town. But, yeah, so we had our GIs, uh, consulted, run a query across our mapping system. And we have engagement or twenty, something like that. Uh, but there's also, one of the reasons we're working through are some poles in town that are owned by, I believe, South West Street or some of the telecoms. And so we'll have to get that sorted out because I don't think the GIs is broad. So they give us, uh, a way of getting some of those things mapped. But we do have all of the poles in town mapped. Be able to incorporate some data, GIs even, and, and working back and forth with whatever company you choose to work. Uh, so we know which ones we have attachments and not utilize that as a basis for it. But there, there will have to be back and forth work between both. That, that's how I came up with the estimate of somewhere the ten dollar per pole. It depends on how many it's worth.
And in item F, there's a section that if the city wants to examine books to see if some pain is correct, that it's found that you do an additional amount, uh, you'll which is good. But I thought there ought to be some provision in there that if it is found that you not made adequate that the city be reimbursed some for their examination, just to check to see that, that it's been done properly.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think that we would be opposed to it doesn't think that being added to the agreement. I mean, our, our intent is to document as we attach the poles and then make you guys aware of attached to. We want to pay, you know, for privilege to be allowed to attach to the facility. I mean, it's, it's benefits of us and so, yeah, it would be a.
Well, this would also be on the phone service, wouldn't it?
Say that again, sorry.
Also be on the phone service. And then franchise fee on it, is that what? You told me there is no.
So I understand your technology, like your internet.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a single attachment within all the phone service. Maybe you also have the franchise fee added on to it.
Yeah, okay. So we would also be getting franchise fee if we records and it turns out you've not got the right amount franchise fee of phones also that we're looking for.
Yes.
Besides just.
Yes, yep. So you would, the compensation to the city looks like five percent of gross receipts on phone revenue as defined in statute and ten dollars per pole per year forever.
I don't see that much money. A few poles and a few telephones at five percent, probably a thousand dollars a year or something like that.
But, and some of our other traditional services are two percent or so. They exist telephone, two thousand a year or so. It's not going to generate a lot of revenue and it does is it adds a service, it adds capability. Right now.
There again, I thought that if we should have to give some their records to see if they pay the correct amount, if it turns out that they haven't, then something should examination.
So I, I noted, um, if I'm understanding correctly, we some type of wording would be for reconciliation process. If the feeling has through this audit, it has been done in there or happened, it should be there. If you have some kind of reconciliation, this is not right. Is that essentially what you're asking for? If, if through the review, if we've determined that has not been accurate. For instance, we have an appropriate amount of poll happens or something, then there's a way of reconciling. That is, that what you're asking for is.
No, I'm asking for the fact that if they haven't paid it, you can't direct them to pay it. The franchise fee on the connection or phone service also.
I wonder if you could use the, either the interest fee, they don't pay it in time and technically considered like if they haven't paid the correct amount I wonder if there's a way to add to that wording.
I just thought we could add wording in there that.
Okay, so that's what I I'm sure that what they have infrastructure wise is accurately matched. But are you also asking about just the process? Books should have.
If the city decided that they wanted to make this company was paying the correct amounts to the city. Then they represent up there, which in here allows us to book some records once a year. And that representative looks over and says, no, there was none. Five hundred dollars a camera. Now, the city may have spent eight hundred dollars to find. So as an encouragement that they're they should have to pay some of the cost of the examination.
Yeah.
Yeah, to be fair about it, only if it's more money from.
That's, it's all if, if we've ever where we've been unpaid, there is a fee
Right.
But that, that's I wouldn't have any problem adding language for that.
Yeah, we wouldn't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Josh, on these pole attachment agreements, do we have?
It's an interesting question.
Well, it's, I think it's going to be a lot of divisional. These gentlemen, and some of the things I'll bring this up after you answer this.
So physical heart pristine, but in practice there is something in place that I can't really explain. So Eric can indicate to me that there, there is something that the state participated, that's what can help me explain.
So that's related to the franchise, the franchise based on statute. But cities can also request a certain amount of fee, which I think is that's the five percent that we get on the phone. Uh, in addition, we have all, we have received a pole attachment from Cox every year. Um, and they.
Is it based on a number of poles?
It's based on and I, I'm just spitballing this, I think it's like three dollars per pole. I was at the cities that were looking at probably close to eight plus years ago, if not more. And they annually pay for attached to, attached to every single pole. There, it's not an amount. And I'm thinking maybe in the range of four, five, four to six thousand dollars a year that we get. I've never physically seen an agreement or a part of it, but they have paid it. We have billed them for that over the years, so.
I would rather, I would rather see just an agreement that they does then not try to make it per pole where you have to go.
Yeah, and we've kind of leaned, and that's why I think some of the change, but right now we don't have that, all that information. This is how many poles we have, and they give us three dollars.
My next question, Josh, is with Cox when we had a pole and we're, I've been noticing people just their attachments on old pole, cutting old pole beside it. Now, are we not allowed to touch their stuff? Are we not called to take them out and attachment to their poles? What's the deal there?
I, I would have to ask you to step on, um, what that process is, what the dynamics are in there.
Want to turn this?
Yeah, I can actually add a little bit to it. So, uh, so yeah, I'll talk at EviG, right? You know, we do a lot of difference with EviG. So toward it, what we're talking about is joint use of facility through, uh, a company called Engines. Mine, that, that municipal power, sorry, power facility operators can use. And it's basically a tool for communications providers, electric providers, anybody that needs to work. And so what we see today in an, in an attachment is when they replace, uh, a pole ticket and it'll say, hey, you're attached to this pole, you need to come to a pole. And we have to show up and move our facility onto the new pole. So we, we subscribe to that today and we do it. Riders don't take care of the obligation to do it and, um, and some, uh, power operators communicate to the facility that it's and so they don't even know that a tax goes on for a long time. So depending on that, to me, that's why I would say communication is the most important thing. Working together in partnership is the most important thing. Because ultimately like this, it's only as good for people that are subscribing to this and they care about it. It's how it gets done. You can take care of it multiple ways, but engines exist, they have a process for it, some people follow it, some people don't. And the problem still exists. So, you know, in, in that instance, in Augusta, you know, what we would expect is if you guys move or, or attach or install a new pole, you would call us and say, hey, we installed a new pole. We'd like to move your facility off the old pole. We can, uh, in some cases, help do that make way for Cox Communications or AT&amp;T in order to clean up some of those issues. And we'd like to be a partner and do some of that if it benefits the city. Because it's not a huge incremental cost to us. And the way I understand the infrastructure, we can do it. Um, when it comes into something that's because every now and again, if you move a pole and you can't move it from the old pole without taking somebody down on the and moving it, it's network impacting, we can't touch it. If we can do some network without it being network impacted, we would love to help out and try and be a partner.
In, in too short, then you can basically say that you are content, you will work with our city crew.
Absolutely.
To move your attachments from the old pole to the new pole.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, yeah. So James, there was a, a question raised and I didn't find this well near as many pole attachment agreements as I did franchises. Have you guys ever seen or done an agreement, just have a flat fee other than a per pole fee? Is there a particular reason that's definitely?
I've, I've, I've never seen it. Uh, I would tell you it would be a little hard until we've done some diligence to exactly what that would look like, just because the the SC code means that we aren't always attached to all the pole facilities in town. And so until we start getting operational with you guys, figuring out, you know, what it's hard for us to know what benefit we're going to receive from, from the facility. So we actually get to the nuts and bolts of figuring out how we pull and we actually leverage it to, to, to deploy our infrastructure.
So, so I'm wondering if, um, if that fee could be a function of that exercise. So once that network has grown, now the problem is like it is growing for a while.
Yeah.
It eventually stops.
We.
We're like, once you can reach that peak, you know how many poles are attached to you. Kind of set fee and then you don't have a revisiting thing, but I can understand why that's being pulled out, why that might be a problem.
Yeah, I think to your point, if we wanted to have a guys do a reconciliation where you didn't have to monitor it on your own basis. Something in there that said, hey, the, the parties agree that the right to reasonably you know, this fee ongoing could, we should not be reasonably withheld. We could put that in there and, and come the end of the deployment, we can come back and talk about, hey, the flat fee made more sense. And then we could probably have a decent conversation, so, yep. I'd like the three dollar one that Paul has instead of ten dollars.
So what do you do in residential neighborhoods that don't
Uh, so where it's buried, uh, you know, and, and put install pedestal, it's just buried in the ground. That's.
It's so, when we ask that question, I think we ask all directly board.
It's, it's going to be, it's going to be the most always bored in town unless there's a reason they can't do it. And one thing I will mention, you know, we, we have a there's a method of installation that's called a, a missile, which not as bad as it sounds on first day. So you can go away and you can hand dig holes every so far. And there's a pneumatic ramp that works on a kind of moles to the next hole and then moles to the next hole and then pull. And we have done that, we do it where it's difficult. Or you really can set up in a place where you can set up the drill or, you know, something like that. But it's rare. Most everything that we got installed that's in the ground, uh, it's sort of the same. It's going to be directionally drilled.
Okay, then what, what kind of a difference make it as this of the home security systems?
What, what, what was that like? What can we pop? I think, I think the, probably the easy, the easy question, uh, the answer would be, you know, if you have a home security system that's connected it's likely just connecting, you know, some sort of onsite device into your internet connection. And that wouldn't change it, you just have a new internet provider with a new internet connection. Internet connection into your onsite device and that's going to be your security system. It shouldn't affect anything, I mean, switch providers without issue.
Yeah, like I have, I have Ring, a lot of people have Ring systems. And so I unfortunately don't have ideas like my, with the P switch call. However, I can connect with Ring through my Wi-Fi, see exactly what's going on as long as I have a Wi-Fi connection. You enter the passcode and you're good to go.
What about those houses that have to connect to the phone service now? Our line.
Go ahead. Like if you have a home phone, you mean? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so you can, you can continue to use your A D T today. So a lot of times A D T will put it on its own infrastructure that might monetize or they might utilize the internet connection. So the nice thing about having a stronger internet connection, when A D T has like alarm system, like okay, something breaks into your house. They can also phone like nine one one, things of that nature. Uh, so it really won't affect the type of internet connection because they're on their own type of network connection of what they do. And a lot of times sometimes A D T will be based on like electricity connection too. So if you lose Wi-Fi, they also have a backup generator, a backup battery that can help do that. So it should not affect with any of the internet connections or phone connection.
I don't, you know, I'm, I'm a little out my depth on the text side on that question specifically, but one thing I will say is, you know, we can call for maintain a switch. And so if there's a specific phone number that is required to operate something that you have on site that needs a traditional telephone number, we can pull that, uh, to our network on the voiceover internet phones that we, that we offer. And so, um, I, I don't know if it solves the problem, but just as, as a point.
We've seen it, especially like live line, people have like devices, they have analog tuck lines, things like that.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the draft, uh, franchise agreement and the poll attachment agreement with I D. You know, I don't. Have control with, with approving that, I would like to see. I'd like to see the agreement with the change suggested up first.
Yeah, so the way I understand your motion, Ron, it would be.
Come up with something.
Yeah, so we, we don't have the exact wording on those other. We don't have the exact wording in here right now. And so if I understood correctly, the, the two things that you talked about, kind of record process in the audit and and if we notice error in the, the, there is a fee associated with that review. On ten dollar pieces for the poll. Um, having some sort of language that's as we revisit in the future to kind of make sure that between us and once full deployment is reached, there's an opportunity to reevaluate how you want to set up that fee structure. So I don't exactly know how you recorded that, but those two.
Well, is there such an emergency on this that we couldn't? Put it in form that maybe.
I, I don't have an emergency, I, I know all of the companies are, are very quickly to try to do all that. I mean, I'm not under the emergency, but I mean, I think tech can explain their, their process and timelines. So our next meeting would be on.
Yes. That would be the next time it would be presented. I mean, you know, we would like to get started. Um, it, it, there was an ability to kind of outline exactly the desire. Um, and then maybe if you guys could, you know, grant, um, ask a motion to grant that, that Josh has the ability to kind of make decisions that, that you're need to back on the language, I mean, we would absolutely can. Not that fast, reasonable, and we, we don't have any problem working through those terms. Um, but we, we really would like to get, get started, get going and get to work. Um, we've, we've been working pretty hard on lining up this. And get, we, you know, getting the agreements to, to something that you would be, you know, happy with. Uh, we'd like to get going if we can.
Yeah, we'd like to get going, what kind of timeline are you looking at on starting?
Yeah, we, I mean, that's, you know, one of the areas like we are, we are correcting the situation to start lining up construction contracts and, you know, um, to work, but we'd like to get started here in the next three days.
A lot of times you got those pre-construction meetings, you need the right people. And just getting this fighters, you know, line locators, of course, those things take time to get them going. And so having this done today would just really help line that up to the next month and then get it.
And do you start by, you know, doing what you're saying? At the same time, you're setting up the A T and T building or first or in sequence go?
We, we run everything currently.
Okay.
Lapping workflows all along in the, in the deployment process. I mean, that's one of the things that we've been successful with. Or the problem is having is, you know, we deploy pretty quickly and we do that by having a really good team. And as a person, I overlap workflows put together.
Mayor and council have just been discussing with this. So attachment agreement, um, like you have precedent and other things that we've done. We kind of get the feedback in direction that's saying, uh, the, the approval is contingent on like this. You know, on final language or something like that. But one of the things Andrew just pointed out that in the case of the franchise, you were doing that by ordinance. This is an ordinance that you're approving. And so I don't know that our comfort level is all that high of approving the ordinance and then changing the language that later or not having that fully realized. One of the things I would ask is, is how important is that reconciliation? If you want to afford with it tonight, how important is that reconciliation kind of language? Uh, but, but so are you willing to not do that part or the tax has, but if you really want that? Uh, like because it's an ordinance, I think there's an element of discomfort of having finalized language and Andrew.
Well, one idea is, I had is, could you guys get started just the poll attachment agreements? There's something in the franchise agreement that would, you want final passage on before. Okay, good point, yeah. Josh pointed out that.
You know, for whatever the reasons you have right now. As old Zion, somebody regrets in life have been. When someone comes to me and says, you have to do this right now, you gotta do it today. The opportunity, you're gonna miss it or, you know, you're gonna cry or something. So it's gotta be done today. My boy said, you know, if I would have waited a week, a couple of weeks, just to make sure everything was okay. Um, I'll just went going anyway. And so you tell me that this has to be done tonight. I get a little worried.
Mike, I can walk with what you're saying there. If we do put the three weeks down to work, we can be, again.
Yeah, I'll, you know. What I'll say is, we'd like to get started. Think, hey, if we can bring it back around and come with the adjustments made and feel like we're in shape. If there's a, you know, you guys could, we, we've been in situations before where we've been rather belly full of it. Start work, uh, in the utility right away without, you know, a signed franchise agreement. We feel like we're going to come back here in three weeks and it's not going to be a big deal. I think if you guys would say, hey, you guys can get to work and start lining things up. Uh, and we're, you know, we have no problem with that. Uh, and I mean, the poll attachment agreement is, you know, a form to as long as we feel like we can get to work and everybody else, we're spot and we're far apart on these agreements, I don't think I would be opposed to it. Making sure you're, you're all the way happy. We really would like to get to work, so I don't know if there's, if there's a kind of a middle.
Thomas, what you're describing with, with that essentially. Census, the, the council is supportive of the agreement once the adjustments are made. Um, that there is sort of, again, I vote. Presumption is that, that the body, the ability of the body is supportive. If they are, um, they would, they would offer that to you, that comfort level to kind of start mobilizing and getting folks lined up. But would you, would there be any physical construction?
I don't think so. I don't think, I don't think we can get folks in the. It's just a case of lining up and making sure that we feel good, that we're getting.
Cause it, cause I think if it's asking for the, the physical. To happen that three weeks without any guiding documents, that to me might be a different.
And I think.
Just kind of get the company aligned or.
I think more, more to the point, it would be, you know, some of the uh, submittal of permits and the review and looking at some of the things that we, that we need to do and consider maybe. Um. I don't know what to call it, but a pre, like a grant, a grant of, so it's like a his permit, review it. See what it looks like, if it looks good, you know, yeah, we can get all that, uh, in place. We can carry out reconstruction meeting, we can then get public works, we can have the municipal facility operators come in and other facility and, and move all the pieces that need to start the project, but no physical shoveling around until the three week timer, we could do that.
Well, we don't have a second on the bronze. Well, I'm not opposed to what Mike is thinking, but to me, it's, it's not a deal breaker to have that, that in there. I mean, the seven or eight hundred dollars that we're going to make on once or twice in, in the life of the agreement to do that. I mean, I understand Mike's point and I agree with him, it's not a, it's not a deal breaker and they've already agreed. In, in principle to the ten dollar.